Let's go ahead and bring the August 22nd planning to order and start the roll call.
Thank you. Chair Lane?
Here.
Commissioner Tanelli?
Here.
Commissioner Soffler?
Here.
Commissioner Lamb?
Here.
Commissioner Lerner?
Here.
All right, full cover of staff. All right. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comments for things not on the agenda. So what we use that for is for people bring up things that we look at later on or tell us what a great job we're doing or whatever other items are on their head that are not on the agenda. It's just an open format for those types of items. So is there anyone here to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and nobody's racing forward, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. So that was our time to do that. The approval of the minutes from June 27th because we did not have a July meeting because everybody wanted to walk off. I guess who was building something, we were ready to go, but nobody was here to need an action. So go ahead and any changes to the agenda or to the minutes from the 27th?
I didn't see anything.
Yeah, I went through and they were so puffy, it's easy to just spot any issues. So good. All right, I need a motion in second. Yeah, they would have orders. All right, motion in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Abstained.
Yes, abstained. Two abstentions and three ayes, all right, which is consistent with who was here during that time. All right, good. And then we'll go ahead to public hearing and I am going to suggest that we switch the orders just because the homeowners are here for their representatives. So we'll go ahead and go with item B first and then we'll come back. Let me go over the format of this portion of the hearing. What we do is we start with an overview from staff that gives us a sense of the whole project or the presentation. And then the commissioners can ask questions of staff. Then we open up the public hearing and we go ahead and have the applicant speak. And then anyone who wants to speak on the item. And then we have whatever questions would be appropriate for those people who are speaking. And then we close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion and actions appropriate with the commission. So that will be the case for both items that we have on the agenda. All right, so with that, we'll go ahead with public hearing, item 4B, the heritage tree removal permit, special structures permit and variance on 375 Walsh Road. And I'll go ahead and start with the staff overview.
Thank you. So as mentioned, three requested entitlements before you tonight for the property at 375 Walsh Road. All entitlements are associated with future plans to construct a new single-family home. The three entitlements include a heritage tree removal permit to remove five heritage oak trees, a special structures permit to allow for a retaining wall in excess of six feet in height, and a variance to allow more than 80% of a basement wall to face a public right-of-way, in this case Walsh Road. So we'll start with discussion related to the heritage tree removal permit of the five heritage oak trees. These trees, of these five trees, four of them are located within the buildable area of the lot, either within or in extremely close proximity to the proposed building footprint. The remainder tree is located outside the buildable area, but within the footprint of what is a proposed accessory structure for swimming pool. The five trees have been analyzed both by the project arborist as well as by the town arborist. There is a recommendation for all five trees to be removed. In summary, due to a tree's structural instability, due to sparse canopies of the specific tree species that are wanting to be removed, tree that has significant leaf, one that has indication of significant future health decline, as well as trees that are in poor specimen format. The application also includes a rather robust replanting plan, specifically five 48-inch box-sized native oak trees, which exceeds the town's minimum replanting requirements. It's, I think it's worthwhile to note the location of these trees, where they are proposed to be replanted. Two within the front, actually, excuse me, three within the immediate front yard and two within the center rear right of the yard. Those locations will provide an aesthetic landscape buffer both at the front and the rear of the property. That landscape buffer is also worthwhile to note as we continue the discussion of the two additional entitlement requests. So moving into that, I'll start first with the variance request. As I mentioned, there is, the request for the variance is associated with the basement wall. And if you see the image up there on the screen, the site itself at 375 Walsh, let me back up for a minute here, does have an existing single-family home with a driveway from Walsh Road. It's a very steep upsloped lot.
Seems even steeper going down.
Coming down the driveway, yes. The image on the screen there, the wooden wall at the lowest level, that is indeed a defined basement area, that level. So this house, as proposed, would include a basement, a first and of course a second story above. There is a regulation within the zoning ordinance that states that not more than 80% of a basement wall can face any right-of-way. Taking a further step back in evaluating the real planning perspective, spirit and intent of that requirement is more appropriate and applicable on a flat lot or a lot with much less topography than the site here at 375 Walsh. So with that, this proposal is requesting, as you see on the screen, 100% of a basement wall to face a public right-of-way. This is part of the design, which is attempting to utilize the current driveway access ramp to minimize the overall amount of grading and excavation that otherwise may have been required with redevelopment of the site and while of course adapting the resulting building layouts to the topography of the site, tiering up, so to speak, following the natural topography of the land. As I mentioned, with the heritage tree removal component request, there is a rather dense landscape screening plan proposed in combination with the existing heritage trees, numerous heritage trees that are proposed to be retained and preserved on-site. It's found that the findings for variance, given the topography of the site and the existing conditions of the pad, the findings could be made in order to support a variance request. Lastly, there is a special structures permit before you tonight. The standard municipal code regulations, as they pertained to fences and retaining walls, limit the height of such walls and fences to be no more than six feet above grade. Actually, do we have the attachments up?
Oh yeah.
So while Nestor's pulling that up, just to describe the area, that's specifically requesting a wall to be greater than six feet in height. At nine feet in height, if you're standing on Walsh Road, you'd be looking to the left at a retaining wall to support a swimming pool at a proposed height of nine feet. Again, the height of this wall is due to the nature of the significant upslope of the lot. The swimming pool does meet all setback standards. It could be located elsewhere on the property, but the farther up that accessory structure could be placed, the taller that wall likely would need to be, again, given the topography of the site. So the image up here on the screen, that line in yellow shows the extent of the retaining wall that would be in excess of six feet at a height proposed of nine feet. Beyond the landscaping proposal of the larger oak trees, there's additional landscaping proposed, abutting that wall to help buffer and screen that even further from the public right-of-way or neighboring properties. So for all of the additional reasons, as detailed in staff report, staff is recommending approval of all three requested entitlements. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have and I know that the project applicants are here as well.
Is there a closed garage or is it a carport similar to what's sitting now?
I believe the proposal is for a enclosed garage, to have a door.
So part of that wall then for the basement would be garage wall too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that basement level from the conceptual floor plans for the future home, at least from what I've seen thus far, does contain the garage and then some behind the garage ancillary living area of the home.
And that looks to me to be in the same general area of the curb garage.
That's correct.
Are the dimensions similar? Do we know or?
The applicant could probably answer that.
And is there, I'm looking at the drawings and it looks like there is no cement or anything between the pool and the other wing of the house. Maybe I can ask the applicant about it. I'll wait, I'll wait till the applicant's satisfied that. Yeah, yeah. All right, any other questions? Staff? All right.
Just one further note, the proposed plans for the main residence and any accessory structures and/or buildings, nothing has been formally submitted to the town to date. All we're looking at here are these three requested entitlements to allow the applicant to move forward with this conceptual layout that would still need to have further zoning clearance at some time in the future.
So we would be taking action on these three things now, subject to their application?
Yes.
We would be allowing them to consider that design and then if some engineering or other thing came to be an issue, then that would come up separately?
It could be a different design. From what these plans show, the ultimate plans would need to have zoning compliance checked for setbacks, height and other development regulations.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
I've assumed that this is the plan that they're going to be using. It looks very nice, but one of it came out as some kind of a monster and we had approved it on the basis of this. Is there a way it would be resubmitted or is it just now to them to be able to do whatever they want with our approval tonight?
Well, the approval would allows for the specific development regulation standards that are being requested under the three entitlements. So five trees to be removed, a retaining wall greater than six feet in height and a basement wall that's more than 80% facing the wall. So the ultimate facade design could be tweaked. I don't know if there's intent of that. That hasn't been indicated to us in terms of what the final design is. I'm presuming that it would be in line with what is already drawn and associated, but I'm sure the applicants could have.
And if I made one thing that can make that more helpful, because you don't want to just give carte blanche, is to say, yes, you can exceed capped at nine feet. Or, you know, obviously the trees, once the trees gone, the trees are gone. But in terms of granting that variance, you can limit it, you know, up to a certain height or, you know, specify to this sort of plan, that sort of thing, be as specific as possible. And then if they did want to change that, they would have to come back again.
Okay, that's good, that's good and nice. All right, good. Any other questions? All right, then we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. You go with the applicants first or the representative?
My name is Gil Castañeda.
Yeah, that way you're being recorded and my mom will watch the table, know who you are.
This is okay. So my name is Gil Castañeda. I represent the design team at Nomos Red. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before the commission. Thank you for the planning, staff and town arborist for the recommendations. Just to clarify what was just mentioned, together with these applications, we submitted what was the planning application, which is the whole packet of line application drawings in the format. So any plans that you see here have been submitted to the city as the planning application and represent the future design of the project. So there's not going to be any changes from what you're looking at right now.
Okay. All right. Is there a garage in the lower section?
Yes, there is a four-car garage in the lower section that represents around 60% of the enclosed space, yeah. And then if you go back to the image, sorry Nestor, everything explained. The first where the car is parked, that is an exterior carport. And then you have around 60% represents the garage and then the rest is additional living space.
Okay.
So that carport that we're seeing in the design there, is that roughly where the existing carport is now?
It's exactly in the same location as the existing.
Okay, and then that basement wall, which looks like a sidewall, how do the dimensions of that compare to the current structure?
So the dimensions of that are equivalent to the existing garage plus the exterior deck that the house currently has. So it extends up to the exterior deck. I don't know if any of you have been able to visit the property, but would be extending to the existing footprint of the current building. That is one of the bases of our submission, is we're trying to utilize the existing garage slab, which is a very prominent and tough slab, which will allow us to minimize earthwork and grading disturbance. The fact of having such a highly sloped lot makes any development very complex. So therefore, we've tried to minimize this complexity and this disturbance by adapting to the, as much as we can to the current footprint.
How much higher is the proposal compared to the current sort of?
It's a, so it's a very different design.
Yes.
So the current design has a sloped cable roof and has very high ceilings inserted in there. So the height is equivalent to the current proposal.
Okay, but it's flatter than opposed to?
Yeah, yeah. So in our opinion, we could consider it less invasive from a point of view because the other one is very bulky on the center and back of the property.
Go ahead.
I'm looking at the garage, I guess it's called the basement wall, the tan, which is attractive and matches the one above. Is it going to essentially have that same facade, the same appearance?
Yeah, this is exactly what we've submitted. The only variation would be here we remove the landscape screening to be able to appreciate the building better in this meeting. But you would have to add, the lower section would be covered by a dense landscape screening. That is, I think it's within the documents that we submitted.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, we're good. All right, thank you. All right, anyone else here to speak on the item? Okay, all right, going once, going twice. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. Yeah, I don't have any significant issues with this, that's why I reversed the order. The only thing would be make sure that it doesn't go beyond what we're clarifying.
Yeah, and just to be clear, what I've heard from the applicant is that this is intended as shown to you. And so what you're saying to me is that you're relying on this and we really could limit it to this. If anything changed and you said, well, actually we need two X or one and a half X, we would bring it back before you to the roll for your own.
Just that you add to the motion?
No, I just said it.
Like a lawyer says it is true.
It can be, when you make that motion, you can absolutely say that, but we keep good track of these meetings that are recorded, so it's okay and staff understands.
And we do have a condition that requires construction to be in strict compliance with the plans as prepared as approved by planning commission.
There you go, okay, good. All right, the only couple of things I just want to highlight on the tree location, just make sure it doesn't get any, you know, electrical or plumbing or any other, you know, long-term issues. Because there's obviously some power going up there and some piping going up there and things like that. So in our excitement about the screening, I don't want to create a problem in 10 years where we got trees that have to be taken out because they're in the way of those things. And that includes whatever type of tree we're looking at or vegetation. I don't mind if it's vegetation as opposed to tree. The thing I was worried about is doing anything that would increase the erosion around that hill or make it so that the, you know, we are not getting a 20- or 30-year lifespan to whatever we're putting in there. All right, all right, with that then, anything else that we need to discuss? All right, then we have three different items that we should probably take separately so that we can clarify the way you present it. And I'm looking for a motion on the five heritage oak trees first.
I move that the planning commission find that the proposed removal of five heritage oak trees at 375 Walsh would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report and that the commission approve the tree removals subject to the conditions listed in the draft heritage tree removal certificate.
A second?
All right, move to second. I just want to highlight that we're not being appreciative in approach to the heritage trees that are in port edition and are in the buildable footprint, which are the two biggest criteria along with safety, that would be allowed the trees to come down.
Absolutely.
All right, we have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? All right, process five zero. Second item has to do with the conditions in the variance certificate. So we'll need a motion on that.
I move that the planning commission approve the variance in 375 Walsh Road based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report, subject to the conditions listed in the variance certificate, to allow more than 80% of the side of the basement garage to face Walsh Road.
All right, do we need to add any language of that to make it more specific?
I don't think so.
Okay, good.
Second.
Move to second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? All right, thank you. I forgot to ask for any comments, so I won't ask, I won't forget this time. All right, now item number three on this list then is the special structures permit. You need a new voice? Sure. Remove that the planning commission approve the special structures permit at 375 Walsh Road. Not at any rate. Just seeing if I was reading it. Based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report, subject to the conditions listed in the draft special structures permit certificate to allow a retaining wall up to nine feet in.
All right. Second.
Move to second. All those in favor say aye. Oh, first, you know, before we go there, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, none? All right, there you go. Just make it beautiful. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you for waiting. All right, thank you. Very nice design. All right, and I'm glad I don't have to drive up and down that driveway again. All right. Next item is item 4A, the school master plan update for Menlo College. Yeah, we have the staff to do the same work last time and then we'll open up the public comment.
So as the commission is aware, the town does have established policies for all of the private schools within the town to prepare master plan updates on an annual basis. So tonight Menlo College has prepared their 2018 update for your consideration. The municipal code does have suggested content for what these master plan updates should include in topics specifically of land use, circulation and parking, enrollment, facilities to be developed within that current upcoming slated year, priority on developments that may be included in their adopted master plans, an update on any changes to historic facilities and/or heritage trees within that school campus boundary, as well as any changes to the uses and/or hours of operation for that school. Unlike what the commission has seen with the last few private school master plan updates, you'll notice that there is no transportation demand management program update for this particular school. The reason being is that there is no requirement for a TDM, transportation management, as part of the original approval of this particular school, unlike all of the other schools within town. So I just wanted to highlight that because I know that's a little bit different than what the commission has been seeing in these last two months since all the other schools have come forward with their update. The other, I think, important piece to note is that there's no use permit associated with the college, with the exception of the carton field use of the college as that is shared with the lower Menlo school, which I believe we had in the last two months brought forward to the commission. So wanted to highlight those two factors. And just going through the suggested content as I made mention of before, in terms of, let's see here, land uses, facility updates, those will be limited in the next year to really, I'd call it ordinary maintenance and repair of existing facilities, improvements to those areas. Some longer-term projections would include repurposing land for faculty, staff and potential future development of carton field for additional recreational uses as well as parking. Again, that particular request would indeed require a use permit and would be coming back to the commission at whatever future date that is formalized. In terms of circulation and parking, as I mentioned, no TDM plan required, so there's no update to provide the commission, but I'm sure that the project applicant can speak on any updates as they've noticed on their internal circulation plan and in the community, given the existing functions of the school. In terms of enrollment, another, I think, sort of unique caveat, unlike the other schools that the commission has reviewed, there is no limit on enrollment. However, the college has indeed given their existing enrollment and projected future enrollments over the, I think, the next five-year outlook. In terms of the immediate increase, or I would say anticipated enrollment increase, you're looking at, I think it's about, let's see, 35, 35 student enrollment for anticipated in the next year. The number went from 765 to 800. It's worthwhile to note though, of that projected enrollment number, about 20% of that are night students. So that would minimize, of course, the impact of any daily activities, it's a smaller number.
Yes, it's 25% of that.
In terms of any trees, no heritage trees are slated to be removed to accommodate any potential future uses. There is one historic structure on the site. It's stable, I believe, and the intended future use, continued use as storage is proposed. So with that and with the further details, as noted in the staff report, it is recommended that the commission accept the master plan update for Menlo College for 2018. I know that the school has some representatives here as well.
Okay, any questions in the staff? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and it's all your show.
Okay, thank you. My name is Steven Weiner and the president of Menlo College. My colleagues here are Bob Talbot, who's director of our facilities, and Frank Wazewski, who is the vice president for finance and administration and our CFO. I'm happy to walk through the presentation if that would be helpful. I did want to add one thing that's beyond the presentation, which is mainly an introduction of Menlo College of 2018 since I don't know how, to what extent it's appreciated, what population we now serve. So I'll do that first and then at your pleasure, either walk through the presentation or respond to questions. Menlo College, which was founded just four years after the town of Etten, was founded at the time in the town of Menlo Park, hence its name. From that point forward until really the early 70s, was a very different institution than it is now. It, for all that time, served a very privileged few and all men. But in the early 70s, there was a significant change in the mission and the student population at Menlo College. First of all, we started to admit women. And second of all, we started to branch out and attract students beyond the immediate geographic area. And indeed, our reach right now is fairly broad. We attract students from 25 different states within the United States and 38 different countries around the world. So it's a fairly broad, broad draw, particularly so for such a small college. And unlike the Menlo College of the early years, it is now an incredibly diverse campus in pretty much any which way you would choose to define that word. It is truly diverse in the traditional sense, that's N, S and D and race. More than 50% of our students self-identify as students of color. But we're also diverse economically, as many students arrive on their family's private jets at the beginning of every year as have trouble putting together the finances to make it to campus. The majority of our students are on some sort of financial aid. Over 90% of our students receive something from us, whether that's $250 a year or whether it's full tuition. The latter is reserved for high school valedictorians, of which this coming year we have five coming in as part of our entering class and all of them come fully with full scholarships. And as well, our, the athletes we identify as having the most promise also tend to have generous scholarships. We're also diverse in terms of backgrounds. It's dependent upon the It's depending upon the year, between twenty-five and thirty-five percent of our students are first generation, meaning they're the first in their family to actually make it to college. And I think of Menlo as a particularly special place because of what we enable in terms of student success. Since so many of our students come from the, the school system, the public school system in the United States, and as we're all aware, that's not a system that's preparing young people well for college. One of the things we can do, given our size and our resources, is build what we think of as scaffolding around each student to enable their success. It's because of that that, that I firmly believe that we enable success for our students where if that same person ended up in a large state school, or even if they could gain admission to a more competitive private school, they would very, they would not be, it would not be likely that they would walk across the commencement stage. Most of our students do, excuse me, do graduate, and they do graduate, graduate within four years. And that's, you know, altogether a fairly special set of circumstances, and again, vastly different from what Menlo was for, for the majority of its, its ninety-one year existence. So that's the introduction. I'll stop my sales pitch, and as I said, I'm happy to walk through the presentation if that would be helpful, or, or just respond to questions.
I have some questions, but, yeah, a couple of questions. It says sixty-five percent of it is on campus, thousand three, two thousand twenty-one, sixty-one percent of two thousand twenty-two. What, what is that number?
We have right now around five hundred and fifty beds on campus. We have an opportunity to fit a few more beds in existing rooms, whether we choose to do that or not, is an open question. But, but it's a large, we have five hundred and fifty beds, we have another seventeen units on campus for faculty and staff. So the majority of our campus population lives on our campus, as, as I do, as Bob does, Frank's a commuter. Yeah. And, and one of the challenges for us is we think about our incremental growth, which isn't dramatic, it still, it still shifts from the primary, primarily residential campus that, that we are currently.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's kind of what I was looking at, was the transition on the, on the traffic. All the other schools, I don't know if you've seen their traffic plans, have done an outstanding job of, of dealing with, actually understanding how to optimize trips in and out of the schools, as well as optimize the times that that happens.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're very different because the schedule of, of people arriving and leaving our campus isn't like most other schools in Adderton. Some come for eight o'clock classes, some their first class is until eleven, and, and neither the students nor the faculty tend to show up much before their class.
Right.
And we have a fairly robust athletics program, which keeps students on campus, sometimes late into the evening for games. So it's, we find people come and go. Our, our parking facilities add up to, I think, four hundred and seventy-one spaces on, on campus, whatever the number is here. They're, it's pretty full, but, but we do not have a problem with everyone finding a space on campus. There are only two ways in which the vast majority of people come and go on our campus. One is directly through the entrance off of El Camino, at El Camino and Ensonal, and the other is off of Alejandra, very close to the intersection of Alejandra and El Camino. So it's very focused, and I would be more concerned about traffic patterns if we found people circling the lots, unable to find a lot, unable to find a space. Again, if you were to come tomorrow during the day, it would be very full, but you would find a space.
Right. Okay, well, that, it's the combination of the growth projected, which compared to the other schools in the area is significant, even though it's not a big number to you.
Yeah.
It's more than any of the other schools. All the other schools have a cap, and they're, and so they, they are what they are.
Right.
Your growth is, is significant enough, and the, and the nature of the school is changing at the same time, where a traffic pattern is going to be more of a factor. All right, so it would seem to me that that would be more of a plan in terms, more of an element of your plan going forward than it is right now. The other thing is that it only has, it only has four chargers for the, for electric cars, according to this, and that doesn't seem like a very good ratio compared to the number of cars that you have on campus. Do you find that they're, they're used?
They, they are used, but they're not maximally used.
Okay. All right, like with my status, your numbers go up.
Same as the zip cars, you know, we have zip cars on our campus, but they're not heavily used.
Yeah, yeah.
We do, we do have commuters, we provide commuting benefits, particularly encouraging bicycle commuters. So, you know, we, we look for ways to discourage commuting to campus. One of the, one of the items on the wish list, but it's our wish list, and I'm not proposing it here, is, as, as was mentioned, a, a unit for faculty and staff that would increase the density of employees who live on campus, that would decrease traffic as well.
Okay, well, all I would say is that the other schools in the area, one in particular, didn't understand the, the importance of being a good neighbor early, and they spent five years digging out of that hole. I've been on, on, on the commission for six years, and actually, they were, they were two years into the hole when I got on, I got on board. And I've watched them dig their way out of it. So anticipating where this all goes, and be, and be anticipating how to demonstrate good neighborhoodness, or good neighborhoodliness.
Yeah.
Is important, because that school didn't. And it took them, the neighbors were, you know, constantly here in front of us, every time this would come before us, this room would be full. And they would be talking about the way that this school didn't demonstrate being a good neighbor. And you're part of a field issue there, so it'll, it'll spill over to you if you go and anticipate a look.
Yeah.
All right. And, and the, and the glaring difference in planning methodology between this plan and theirs is primarily around traffic, and also what I would call a strategic overview of what your vision for the school is. Like in ten years, are you going to be a ten thousand school, person school, or you're going to have seventy, you know, five sites in different parts of the Bay Area? I don't, I see like a two-year window thing, but I don't see the vision for what the school's going to become. And so those types of things, I think, if they were explicit, would help people understand where we are in terms of, of how it fits into the community.
Yeah. So I can, I can, points taken. I can speak a little bit about the vision of, for the future of the school, the, because it has been a subject of a fair amount of conversation at the board level, where, where there is a consensus that the, I'll call it the specialness of Menlo, which is its size, its, its single facility, and its, I'll call it traditional, which is, you know, throwback to the fifties conception of what college is all about, is a distinguishing feature that we want to hold on to. So for us, that means a primarily residential campus, it means a full-time student body, which ours is, it means a student body that's eighteen to twenty-three, which ours is, and it means, it means a, a robust athletics program, which again, keeps people on our, on our campus. We don't have any distance learning component, which many other schools do, we don't see that in the horizon for us, but, you know, I'm talking the next five years, which as far as we're willing to, to look. So five years from now, we expect we're still one facility. As I noted in, in the documents, we don't believe our current building capabilities will allow us to go much beyond nine-nine-fifty. And so at that point, we need to step back, and as we approach that, and figure out if, if there's a different long-term conception, or if that's actually the Menlo College of the future, which is a very real possibility, because it's, again, it's something that's distinguishing Menlo College. One thing to put some in context, and why it's so important for distinguishing, first of all, it's incredibly competitive, the college business. Universities and colleges across the United States are declining in enrollment, and small colleges are declining faster than others. So we've been growing, and we want to hold on to, to whatever combination of aspects are allowing us to achieve that. And we think that one of them is the fact that we pull together the components I referred to earlier, is that traditional model, and we will, and that's, that's where we see our future, right now. Five years, all right, who wants?
Okay. All right, and, and what kind of community outreach do you have, have in, in your programs now?
Most of it is, the, the vast majority of our community outreach in the past has taken place around carton field discussions, where we've had a large number of neighbor meetings. The, on an ongoing basis, we've invited neighbors to our events, we always do. We communicate with neighbors to inform them when there are going to be events on campus, particularly events in, on Wanderlyck or Carton Field, they're college events, but also when they're on the, the heart of the campus in the quad. Beyond that, we send them holiday cards and updates, I don't know what that's.
Yeah. All right, well, the only, the only things I'm, what I'm highlighting are things I don't see in the, in the, in this report. I don't see a community outreach component, I don't see a, a traffic plan, I don't see an overall vision for what the vision of the, of the, of the college is.
Yeah.
And I think those are all potential issues for the college and for the community relationship.
Fair enough.
And I don't think they are now, which I, which I think is good, based on the people in this room. But I don't think you want it to get where I've seen it.
Yeah.
All right? And all those elements are the things that triggered it in, in other situations.
So if I'm hearing you right, you're encouraging them to be proactive, especially the traffic management plan, on their own.
Right.
Before anything comes.
Right. And maybe also community outreach. And by community outreach, I don't necessarily mean neighbor outreach, I meant just where are you with the community? One of the things I, one of the things I would, I would think that, you know, given a, what I consider to be a pretty ugly climate overall, the demographic of your, of your, of your school needs to be sort of understood that there's, there may be additional outreach of a certain type required to keep, make everybody feel like, hey, everything's normal. And I don't, I don't think that's an issue right now, but I think if we continue down the path, which I think is an ugly path in general, having that kind of demographic not understood by the community will be a problem. And I don't think it should be. I just think, I, like you, I, I have a celebrate.
Good, thanks.
All right.
I said, so, so actually, I, I, we sponsored a young kid for a while on the campus, and I was always impressed with it. He played football, he came from a disadvantaged background, and so I had never gotten to know it, even though all of our kids went through Sacred Heart, I, I had never gotten to know it. So I really enjoyed walking around, we'd be over there for Menlo College games and all sorts of things. But until you really get to see the college, it's really impressive, I really liked it. And I agree with you that, that I haven't noticed the motion as much in terms of people coming in and out, like you would at one, at one of the smaller schools, per se, because you've got people coming in and out. But I agree with you and your gray-haired wisdom for, for what that becomes, even with the red shirt that doesn't quite match the gray. If you were behind.
That's just cars.
Exactly. But I will say, with, with Chop running around, you know, I, I, it sounds like that's, you guys have moved on from that, and I know Menlo is trying to, so whatever you can do to keep that, as, as Eric said, off the forefront, in terms of those neighbors, and we know a lot of people over there, and certainly would, would be happy to help you with that in terms of those relationships.
Yeah.
I was actually curious on, on the intersection, because I, I drive up and down El Camino pretty regularly, and I know they've changed some of those, and I hope those have helped in terms of your crossing areas. Every time I see those kids over there, and you know, kids are kids, God only knows what frame of line they're in.
Yeah.
At any given time, I hope those have really helped.
They very much helped the pedestrian traffic. The, the vehicular traffic at Ensonal, at Alejandra and El Camino.
Yeah.
It's not a pretty picture there, but I understand there's very little that can be done.
Yeah.
I do want to back up and thank you for your comments, and also encourage you to come back to Menlo College, because a lot has changed since our football days.
Yeah.
And also encourage you to sponsor other student, I mean, come on. I, I wrote, I got that down.
Exactly.
But, but thank you, I appreciate that.
Picking back on Eric's traffic thing, not to be a dead horse, but it would seem to me, just traveling around the area and knowing the neighborhood, is that if you were to do something like that, be proactive and kind of look at traffic issues surrounding the campus, it would be especially important on Alejandra, between the fields and the, and the campus, because I think that's probably the area that's most, probably the most dangerous with pedestrians and kids crossing back and forth and things like that. And, you know, obviously with the auto traffic on Alejandra. And the only thing that jumped out at me, other than Eric's traffic issue, is your enrollment projection that I just wanted to ask about, because when you look at the three to four year history in three to four year segments, it's anywhere from ten to fifteen percent. When you look ahead to the next three years, you're projecting about a twenty percent increase in enrollment, and I was wondering what those projections are based on?
Two, two things. First of all, recent, most recent success in recruiting, we, we have what looks to be our largest entering class this year ever, which gives us some confidence going forward. That's building on a lot of changes we've made to Menlo College in the last five years that I think have helped with our outreach and our reputation, and thus our recruiting. We've also, more recently, like within the last twelve months, significantly changed our recruiting patterns and our, the investments we make in, in outreach to prospective students and their families, which we're seeing some payback from. So it's all very encouraging, and it's, a small college is a fragile entity, and anything could, could change that and trip us up. Federal policies, even though we're private, a lot of our students depend on, on federal subsidized loans, and changes there could come back to haunt us for sure. Anything that would impair our reputation? You're pointing to?
Just talking about kids sponsoring. Maybe just get more people sponsoring kids to, from your athletics.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, so, right now, as we look at the world, we, we have a good shot at making those projections, but, you know, lots of caveats, a lot could change.
All right, anything else? The only, the only time I've ever seen a traffic issue is our graduation, by the way.
Yeah, it is the largest event we have on every year.
Now you say it.
No, I, I'm anticipating that, that more of a change, but I'm also saying that the only time I've ever seen.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, anything else? All right, any other input or any else? Anyone give us a financial rundown or anything?
We could pass a hat.
We, we. All right, all right, thank you. Then I'm going to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a question for you. Would we accept this, what does that mean in the motion?
That you found that the submitted master plan update adequately addresses the municipal code suggested criteria for an annual master plan update. Did it have enough information in it?
Okay, all right, any, any discussion?
Well, I'm asking you a question, did you want, did you want it to amend that you have specific comments, or what would you like?
No, I'm just trying to, I, I don't like the plan, it doesn't.
But that's what you're saying. But is it because what's lacking is, are things that are not required to be there?
They, for me, there's, there's an aspect of required versus smart plan, and, and I think it's meets the criteria for, or required, but doesn't meet the criteria for smart plan. That's my own personal. Yeah, as an annual update, though, is, so, so you have two choices, right? Which is don't accept the plan and have it come back, which is maybe a date certain or what have you, or you accept the plan that you want to see the following, never by next year.
Yeah, I think, I don't, I just don't know what you're trying to say.
Yeah, well, Frank said, what I'm saying is, given what we have right here, I'm not going to approve it, but I don't think that that's something that the commission needs to do. But I'm also going on record as saying that this is an incomplete plan, and it's the beginning of the discussion of a complete plan process. And that's, and I would, I would not expect everybody to agree with that, but I wanted to go on record saying that this is not completed.
Well, for the things that are lacking, in your opinion, what would be a process of updating the requirement to make those a requirement in the future?
I, I, I think a combination of, and overall view of what they, what they, I would call a medium term, which would be at least five year view of the, of this campus, because two years would be inadequate for a campus this size, and a traffic plan that would, you know, that even if it said, hey, you know, we don't have the same problems, we have, we have a distribution of our traffic flow that thirty percent of it comes between ten and twelve, I just want to know that.
Right.
And the schools that did not know it found it out later.
So if they should be a required part of the plan, how do we start the process to make that a requirement?
By having me vote no and putting it on record, and having me stay alive until next year. Okay, but, okay, but let, let's go to the, so, so you were really clear upfront, saying they are, they are. Okay, but let's go to, so you were really clear upfront saying they are not necessarily exempt from the TDM, but they are not required to do a TDM, or did I mishear that?
No, that's correct, there's no existing approval document, entitlement document associated with Mellow College that requires them to have a transportation demand management program.
So who would have installed that in the first place?
I would guess it would have been a commissioner or council or whoever the deciding body was to allow for the original use of the property.
So their grandfather did.
Their grandfather did.
So they missed that requirement. If they were to start a brand new college right now, that would be required. It just wasn't.
So that's kind of hard, so you're giving them, you're giving them the pain of what Mellow School went through and trying to help them avoid that, but yet this isn't a requirement for them. So I, now I'm, this is a you question, what, how do you want to say?
When it comes to TDM, I don't feel that you could reject it for their failure to detail a TDM because they're not required to do it. They are required to provide certain categories of information. If they have either omitted one or not given you enough detail such that you're satisfied with it, you absolutely may reject it. You just can't ask for something that they're not required to provide. But if you don't think of the things they're required to provide, they have to give you sufficient detail. And if you feel like you didn't get that, you know, if you could just say, I think on this topic, maybe we need a little more, you may do that. Or you may send a message as you've done and move it on to the next.
So whoever makes the motion can either say verbatim to what's here, which it sounds like what Steph just put into this, or amend it to say with further emphasis in the coming year separate of the TDM, which is not, you know, that's the third rail, if you will, that you'd like a further projection or a more detailed projection of where things are, you'd like more outreach to the community relative to the field?
Yeah, I am having problems going forward with this discussion on the record with the idea that it's on the table now to have this looked at more thoroughly in terms of a plan and look at the other plans that are out there to make this more in line with that. All right, so I can go with that.
Can I clear? All right, that would just be a request of ours, right? It doesn't automatically become a requirement because we state that we want this information and we want it in the record and we want it in the motion. It's still technically just a request to which they do not need to comply.
Yeah, because you would be accepting it for this year. I think they're getting the message and then next year when you see it, you would just reject it. But they would come more prepared if that is, if their experience is that, gosh, we barely skidded through this time, I assume next time they would give more detail, flush it out a little bit more. It would not be a legal requirement.
So they would no longer be grandfathered into coverage of our town?
No, they still will not have a TDM. Every, I assume it's annual, every year they have to come back and say, this is how we're doing, it's a report. And that report is either sufficient or insufficient. So every year you're going to get the same information. If this year you're like, oh, it's pretty close, my assumption is next year they will provide you with more information.
I think the bees in the honey versus the bee in the flash water is kind of an analogy here with them since this isn't something that's come up in the past that I remember from my years on this as well. So I think to be fair, I think they've heard the direction. And I think it's fair, the fair thing is to make the motion as it is, that's what's fair.
Okay, and then.
I mean, I'm not saying you should go for it, I'm just saying it's fair.
Yeah, I, from a planning perspective, I have a concern over just sort of friendly coming up with numbers that don't seem to be understood. We had to ask questions in the presentation, normally we don't have to ask questions like, why are we going to roll fifty? What are the grades that are going to be affected by them? In the other reports, we see demographics by grade. We don't see this massive number that says there's nine hundred people showing up. So we see, you know, I can see the matriculation. So, Paulus Worth, I was nine years on the school board, he's from Monte Ellis, he fights school. So I'm used to seeing these kind of numbers relative to matriculation through the class and things like that. And as well, coming up with some kind of vision for what we could expect on the, you know, in terms of the future enrollment.
I do think, though, that to the end that you're trying to get to, that your no vote carries weight in getting to that point.
All right, let's go.
Okay, thank you. I'm with the planning commission except for filing the two thousand eighteen annual master plan update from Mellow College.
I'll second.
All right, who wants to second? All right, move to second, all right, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
No, no. All right, all right, there we go, see you next year.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, on the new business, the discussion of the basement garages under accessory buildings. All right, one of our little side topics we discussed, this is a really good overview, by the way, I thought that one was really, really good. I felt really good about it, so do you want to go ahead and give us any thing you want to cover?
Just a summary of what's detailed in the memo, following up on the commission's direction to staff to evaluate what we have seen so far is two requests for special structures permits to allow a basement in the form of a garage that does not have a traditional driveway approach, that is, the garage, basement garage is only accessed internally to the above-grade building by hydraulic parking lifts. So the commission has considered two of them, both have been approved, but there had been some concern on potential life safety issues that could be associated with the use of a basement garage and only having one means of exiting that from a below-grade level. So with that, I met both with the chief building official and the fire marshal to get a little bit more detail in terms of once you approve the use and it gets to an actual construction drawing, what that means in terms of minimum code requirements for construction. I'll start with my conversation with the fire marshal. In summary, very low to no concern was expressed to me from the fire marshal in terms of health and safety issues. Because of the fact that this basement garage area would be classified as a U occupancy construction type, what that means is non-habitable space versus habitable. The occupancy type of that, given the associated requirements, specifically that it would indeed require fire sprinklers and it would indeed require some means of additional egress from that basement level, the fire marshal found that the likelihood and concern of loss of life, which is their primary focus, again, would be very little to none. The building official, moving on to my conversation with him, did confirm that minimum building code requirement would require one means of exterior exiting from that basement garage. He did note that the minimum code, however, it could be simply just a small light well with a ladder to climb up to grade. The two applications that the commission considered voluntarily by the project advocate went, I'd say, a bit beyond that in terms of a small stairwell at the basement level with stairs that actually terminated at grade. But that's not to say that somebody could not request the tiered-back version, so to speak, of just a ladder to get them up to grade. He did note that the use of the basement would indeed require some minimum ventilation combined with the sprinklering by the fire department. Also, which wasn't anything discussed specifically by the commission, but I thought was worthwhile to add too, that at the grade level of that garage where the lift would open to lower down a car, there would need to be some type of guardrail system. We actually reviewed both the plans of the commission, the commission approved, and they both indeed had those sort of collapsible, almost bowers, so to speak, so that an individual couldn't fall down into that basement level. So with that, they're not, we also went out and looked at what other neighborhood jurisdictions have in terms of regulations and what we found was, first of all, this request is not a very predominant request. Yeah, but for those that did have some applicable requirements, most did need to be reviewed by that jurisdictional planning commission. So with that, the commission could direct staff to look into this further. We could go, excuse me, into the area of perhaps revising the ordinance to elaborate on requirements that the commission would see to find further substantiate any life and safety issues that we felt were still outstanding given the information that I just shared, my conversations from the permitting requirement end of it.
I have a question, so a hundred and eleven years ago, when I was on the general planning committee, we just actually probably sent it to all of you for some reason, lingered and stayed on the planning commission forever. But whatever it is, we went through this and there were a couple of things that we saw that were happening with the developers in town. Not only were there safety issues, but there were a number of things that were noise-related as it came to under accessory structures, if you had a garage there, how was the access to it? Were people screeching around the FAR issue relative to square footage on the lot? We kind of mucked around with that a little bit so that people couldn't, if they put their square footage under there, they couldn't replace it up on the surface, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So that's kind of where this all started, so it's kind of having like a deja vu moment here. It doesn't feel like a lot of people have utilized it, is that what I'm kind of hearing? I know Dave Dollinger did on Holhemos, I mean, you guys probably all saw that when that came through.
We've had two in the five years I've been here, and they've all been this year.
Oh, is it, is it gone too long? Because I don't remember at all while I've been on planning commission.
Yes, at least in my tenure and then in my conversation with the town planner who's been here even longer, it's just been the two that we've seen. I think it's important to note that those two are two separate properties, of course, but from the same architectural firm, so.
Which, who is it?
I believe it's Arcanum Architecture out of San Francisco. Which is more prominent, right? There's many parking lift type systems and public parking garages and.
I got it.
Yeah, interesting.
And so they're not pushing, when they do it, they're not pushing the boundary to try and move square footage up to the surface, they're just people that want to have extra vehicle storage or whatever it might be downstairs.
Yes, at least for those two apartments.
Yeah, that was a big deal.
But also when you do a search, when you've got multiple cars to store and you do a search on who's done anything and happened to that, for example, right, so.
Wow, okay.
Okay, cool. All right, I didn't think, I felt comfortable with this, with this thing. I didn't feel like we needed to do more once I found out that there were certain, some of the questions I had about fire safety and things like that.
Well, yeah, that was the main thing, because those of us who've been around cars or even just been neighbors of people whose cars suddenly burst into flames, which means both, it's a scary thing. And to have a ladder you have to climb up, Americans with disabilities wouldn't be too happy with that.
Not satisfied with that.
Yeah, so it's a simple thing to require a stairwell, surely. Which is a basement, I wouldn't say a word, but to have a car in there, now these electric cars, batteries these days. Yeah, so, yeah. So I know a person whose whole garage burned down in the night because the car suddenly burst into flame and they came out in their pajamas and there was a big fire, so. It can happen and I wouldn't be comfortable ever with approving that, like just now.
Yeah, all right, so will we be able to make it so that the stairwells required or not?
Certainly, we could, I think, I think I've been wrong. I hear the direction from the commission and right now, if you would be reviewing a future application, you'd be reviewing the plan set. And if they did not have that, there could always be a condition added that plans submitted to the building department indicated an actual stairwell versus a ladder type system. That way you're not opening the ordinance up again, it's a little bit more cumbersome of the process.
Yeah, and I would say, only if it gets to be, if it gets to be an issue that we come up to, then we'd go down a more cumbersome approach. So, you know, and also, anything we do here that would be appealed, we'd be able to, it'd be highlighted to the council that it was an issue that we had with anything other than a stairwell.
Is that fair to an architect or a firm that's designing it to not realize we're going to compose that requirement? Easier for them if they knew ahead of time that they've got to have that? Or is it really complicated to put it into the code?
Well, to throw it into the code would require legislative change to the ordinance, which would be both, excuse me, commission then council consideration of revising the municipal code. I don't believe that it would be cumbersome because before those detailed working drawings are submitted to the building division to actually get a permit to break ground, they would need to come to the commission first. We don't require the same level of detail that those construction drawings would have. So, I mean, in my opinion, no, I don't think it would be cumbersome if they came in with those conceptual drawings of planning first at the counter and, for example, they had a ladder and we are having the conversation. Yeah, right, and we strongly recommend that you change that ladder to a stairwell.
Okay.
Can we do that on trees now, can we do that on, on set direction?
And anytime you start seeing things a lot, then we need to first look at it. There might be circumstances where they have another way to address this and you're comfortable with it, you know. So.
All right, cool, all right, good work on that. I liked reading it, I was like, hey, this is very interesting.
I was amazed to see it come to court since that's formal.
All right, any other questions? Then we'll go ahead and go close the new business and go to the commission's report. Anything that is noteworthy?
I have two things.
All right.
So somehow I became the neighborhood representative for All Monroe. And two questions, one, a neighbor friend, literally a coach I used to coach with years ago, sought me out walking or something. And apparently we approved, or the town approved, do you know where I'm going? The town approved a home that's being built at eighty-eight Park Avenue. And apparently the youth, I remember, in one of those A two lots who were there, the youth says feel like they're coming over the street. Now, happens to live on, full disclosure, he happens to live on this side of this thing. And next to him is a single-story little renter-type, old, old-school Appleton home, beautiful, but it's being rented, an older owner, whatever. And so I think he's worried that he's going to end up, you know, with mansions on the side of it. I drove by and I couldn't tell because I don't have that eye, I'll get my wife to do it and she will definitely have the eye, but just, I bring it up just so it's, just so we know. Then his neighbor came up to me and asked about the one I've asked about before on All Monroe that keeps going and going and going.
He's cleaning it up a little by little, right?
Yeah.
Still has the orange, the blue stuff.
It's going to be amazing.
That's the one forty-six, I think.
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
So, that was a different, so just, those are the two things that I would comment on.
So people in the neighborhood are still have questioning what's going on? And how long has taken them?
Do you want, do you want?
Yeah, a long time.
So I can't figure it out, anyway, you said they have a valid permit if they're going, so whatever that is, I just wanted to help me back there.
Anything else?
Yeah, the highlight real quickly, did our next-door neighbor decide to knock their house down? So it's a Icler, it's a, not only is it an Icler, it's the Icler that Icler's son had lived in and his grandson lived in. And so, and so it was there for sixty years. And it was a flat roof type, not the peaky roof type. And it's going to be replaced with a two-story and a basement. But a couple of things to highlight, first of all, sixty years of there and four days before, it's just totally flat. You know, so it's pretty amazing. But the, but the highlight is that when you have a construction crew who is actually concerned about the neighborhood, you can tell. And they are, they've been extremely careful when they drive in with the big trucks out there to be low speed and low RPM, so there's not, there's nothing noise you'd expect. They did some pre-cutting on the trees around, so they wouldn't chop them all down randomly. They did, and they went around to the neighborhood on both the Appleton side and the non-Appleton side saying, hey, this is going to go on probably for the next two years. They're over there knocking the whole thing down and they don't start a minute before eight o'clock and they go until late four and then they cut it out.
All that saves them a lot of green.
Yeah, right, but I'm telling you, when you do it right, it changes everything. They were knocking things down and digging and they were spraying water to make sure it didn't blow through the neighborhood. I mean, all the things, you go check, check, check.
Who's that?
I, you know, I don't know the name of the company, the guy that's.
What street are you on?
Encina, yeah, sixty-six Encina, anyway. But before it went down, I happened to go to an Icler event a couple of years ago where Icler's grandson, who lived in the house for sixteen years or whatever, lived there and I emailed and said, hey, you know, they're going to knock this down. And he got ahold of them and he took a tour before they took it down. Yeah, so it's, it's a little bit of Icler history that's forever gone. Yeah, so, but it's another good example of, there is a sort of a.
Yeah, so, but it's another, another good example of, of, there is this sort of a strategic architecture to a neighborhood.
Yeah.
And so when you, when you had a one-story flat roof, an extra one-story flat roof, an extra one-story peak roof, and nobody looked into everybody's bedroom, and then when you go to the modern look, it's like everybody's like, right, you know, it changes the dynamics of the, of your, 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 uh, architecture. So that's, that's gonna happen too, about two years, you know? And, uh, but anyway, it's, it's a, it's an, it was an interesting moment. You know, if you were Palo Alto, it would still be there, but, yeah. But here it's, but here it's gone. Anyway.
So Palo Alto now has lo- four levels of historic, pretty interesting to build out.
Yeah.
You're one through two, forget it.
Right.
You're not touching it.
Right.
Three, maybe four, possible, but there, you, you end up having to get these historical reports that are really interesting. Winston Churchill had a practice there, he did that, it's really, yeah, it's pretty amazing.
Yeah, and the, and the Iclers are one of the, because they're-
All the I, the neighborhoods of them, all the neighborhoods are possible.
That's right. All right, uh, that's all I had. Anything else? All right, uh, thank you, uh, thank, you, you have something?
Okay, good, sorry.
That's right.
Quick, please, please, um, uh, just following up for the anticipated future joint planning commission city council study session to discuss the heritage tree, ordinance revisions. Um, yeah, I actually, I just checked with the city clerk and unfortunately she, the doodle poll, hopefully that all the commissioners got, she didn't get her to an agreeable date, so we don't have anything set, so now we're looking in October. Um, sometime, again, you, you may receive another email from her. Um, but she did ask if I could ask the commission if, uh, evenings or mornings would work better or worse for anybody, if there's a preference either way and you can let me know, that might help her tailor her, uh, papers.
Yeah, I approve every month, every time, so.
Okay.
I was one of the ones that just-
Evenings are like this, you know, about, you know, six to eight or whatever, that's what we're used to, but, you know.
Okay.
In a pinch, I could probably be flexible on a given day.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's funny, I didn't hear about the schedule, but there's so many times I thought maybe we could run, do something that works.
Yeah, as soon as I hear, I'll, I will, will let you know.
Okay.
Unfortunately I don't, so.
All right, anything else then?
Actually, can I ask a question? So do we keep track each year how many trees we take down?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
What, what's the trend?
Well, you missed a report on that, I think.
I did.
Oh, I did, yeah, I did that a few months back. I, I'll share it with you.
It's a really good report, too.
Good, meaning it's going like this?
No, well, no, good, I mean, it's very thorough in terms of why we did it and what, what the requirements were.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and it was very, it was very enlightening in that, in that it was, uh, it was, it was what we would hope we would look like on paper. You know, the number, the gross number of it looks like, well, what's going on here? But when you actually look at the individual items, it was like, okay, that one was bad, this was gross.
And maybe it doesn't always include PG&E, because a lot of those PG&Es, which, whatever.
Well, that's our excuse.
That's cute enough.
Yes.
That's cute enough, right, it's not a number.
We were also doing a lot more with Monica now, with, we have Monica and Sally. Um, I, from my perspective, doing a much better job of giving me things to work with. So somebody's already cut down a tree and I say, well, how do we know what the size was? They have pictures, measurements, and that gives us statistics.
Remember that big banyan tree that was over here that one time, that one that sort of leaned into the street? And that was on the list and so you figured that was-
That was on redwood, way up, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So they, I mean, you go through the list, you're like, oh, yeah, that one, we, I haven't heard of that one, I would get that one, oh, yeah, that one. Yeah, so it was like, I worked through the whole list going like, yep, that one was made total sense, that one made total sense. Yeah, we had a discussion about these terms, the redwoods, uh, along the back of the pool area, they're all locked down. You know, so that's, that's all, that's all very good.
Could be.
I felt really good about it.
Yeah, um, I moved.
Moved?
Say?
Moved it.
I know.
Move your second. All of you, please say aye.
Aye.